I call to order the Board of Trustees meeting for Tuesday, July 5th, 2022, and the time is 6 o'clock. Trustee Johnson, would you like to give an indication?
I'd like to stay with you. Laura, thank you for this day and the beautiful sun you gave us this afternoon with the early rain. Thank you for the citizens and our freedoms that we enjoy, this country just had a birthday, and that you would be with us and continue to bless us. Be with those who protect us, our freedoms as well as protect us personally, and be with their families as they miss them when they're gone. Amen.
Please, Laura, read out the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, please.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Ms. McKee?
Here.
I move to adopt the agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Yes, I'd like to move to make an amendment to the agenda. First, I would like to remove the three-minute limit on trustee comments and announcements. I believe this limits the ability to discuss important matters and to respond to the public's comments. And then I would also like to add the following discussion on the Records Commission. We're out of compliance, especially with the video retention. Add the food truck at the park discussion, just to discuss if we're going to do it or not. There's been inquiries by the residents. Update on development requested, and any update on sewer capacity. A discussion on Reynoldsburg annexation inquiries. I know it's directed to speak with attorney, but I think it's important that we discuss this with the board. Update on the live streaming and archiving of meetings. I think we should provide this for transparency purposes. Although I'm doing it as a resident here, the other meetings are not being captured. Additionally, a discussion on the Pike Street aid system request. I see the grant is on there. We're going towards funding. However, a question about the request and also just about the entire design and proposal that should be answered before we move forward. Request an update on the Laurel Drive, 4.2 acres of township land, to discuss if we're moving forward with that or not. An update on the sheriff's deputies, the additional ones, when that is going to occur. A discussion on social media, so we can be transparent with our activities and events to the township. Discussion on a Dropbox, so residents and builders can drop off payments and documents after hours. And then one of the items I did request was placed on the agenda about the pavement management group and the roadway, but I'd like to add to that the resolution for engineering assistance. And then also a brief discussion on regulating transient vendors that were allowed to do. I think that is a request of the community. And an update on the light trespass issue on Blue Monkey and the adjacent hotel. I do see Storage One is on the agenda, but we've had no updates on that. And then the previous meeting, you had solicited requests for agenda items and grants. We're not... A discussion on grants, what we're doing with that, was placed on the agenda. Any revision, update on the point handbook drafts provided, and the West Lake Development Group. And if you would like to copy this?
Yes, sir.
And some of those items, just for the record, we were researching those at the staff level. We're going to be directing some of those, I'd say in some cases very good discussion items, to the work session. It's my understanding that the president would like to go in the direction of regular meetings being reserved for action items as opposed to just general discussion and potentially, you know, quick decision-making. Just FYI.
Regarding discussion on that...
Thank you, Madam President.
It is difficult to bring action items when there is no communication with the consultant, with various other members of the staff. And we should not just bring items to the floor that are going to be pre-approved. This board should have a discussion on these matters in public to get the public input. So that is why I'm requesting these items. It's a substantial list, but it's built up because the majority of every requested item has been refused. So these shouldn't be just decided behind the scenes between a consultant and the chairperson and then brought for a vote. We should have discussion in public, and that's what I'm requesting.
And thanks again, Madam President. Our intent was to take them to work sessions so that we could vet them there and then bring them back to action agendas.
And that is what we have started doing under my... Since I became the president of the board, is those work sessions, how important they are for the residents and myself. I am a resident, the rest of us are here. So that's what we're doing, to get you guys involved as well. So we worked more work sessions before. We would just... We just had an agenda items, and we were just back and forth. Now we have work sessions, which is, to me, is more conducive to what we're trying to get to have.
The last work session, there was zero discussion.
That's all I had. That's all I had, Madam President.
Thank you.
And the last work session, there was zero discussion and debate during work.
Are you going to have a discussion on the original motion? Oh, let's go back to discussion on the original... Well, we just had a discussion, and he wanted to... Okay, yeah, we already had a discussion, and he wanted to...
Mr. Evans?
No.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes. I move to approve the minutes from May 3rd and May 17, 2022, meetings as presented.
I'll second for discussion. I think the minutes are deficient in that they don't contain all motions made per Roberts' Rules 48:4, which should be included. They do not have to be seconded. So I think that should be amended.
If you as a board would make a motion regarding the motions being due to lack a second, I'll follow the board's discretion. Would ever board like to be done with that?
And I would just like to remind the board that we adopted Roberts' Rules of Order as the bylaws for this organization, and you even place it at the top of each agenda.
Correct.
And so we'll follow that. So I believe we should follow Roberts' Rules of Order. We should not pick and choose what we follow.
That's exactly right.
So therefore, it should be amended, include all motions, unless withdrawn, and they were not withdrawn.
Is there a second to amend?
I believe what Mark's asking is for you guys to note the minutes tonight and maybe go back through and put all the ones in, and that I go back there and second.
So you want to update it for more information?
Right, unless you and Johnson...
But when they die for a second, there's no reason to report it, because it's like it's never recorded.
As an employee at the township, it seems like this keeps coming up, so I need direction by being the person taking the minutes of what the board would like me to do.
Right, and that's what...
Then I will do what the board would like me to do, because right now I'm in the middle of the three of you. So if you as a board would decide when it comes to a motion that dies to lack a second, having you as the board want to handle it, I'd be more than happy to do the motions I'd like for you.
And according to Roberts' Rules 48:4, the body of the minute should contain separate paragraph for each subject matter, should show all main motions that were made or taken up, except normally any that were withdrawn.
Which is when they die.
No, withdrawn is withdrawing it.
So dying is even like it didn't ever exist. Withdrawn is when it was there and it was withdrawn, but dying is never... It never was a record.
If you move to secondary motions, they discuss that, that were not lost or withdrawn, there's a difference between them.
Exactly, and that's my point. It died.
They don't need to be seconded.
There's no record. It's no record.
And that's what the board's doing, is that there's no record of the business of the township by not including it.
Mark, it died, so that's why there's nothing there. We talked to the prosecutor about this as well.
It's plain text.
And I understand that. I understand that.
The prosecutor's office directly made the direction from the majority of the board. So the majority of the board would let me know how they want the minutes, and be more than happy to do it for you.
Okay, that's... Well, you know where I stand, so...
You have a motion or a request right now to approve that?
It's a roll call, I think, right? Okay. What about a call decision?
You're in roll call.
So it's roll call.
Mr. Evans?
No.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes.
Now, if you guys would like to make a motion or something to direct me in the future, that'd be great, but right now I'm taking direction from the majority of the board.
Public comments are limited to three minutes per person. Please come up to the podium and state your name and your address for the record. Are there any public comments today?
My name is Judy Kort. I'm located 12156 Palmer Road. First, one question. The list that Mr. Evans has brought up as far as adding to the agenda, when we speak to that, is going to be discussed in a work session. How do we notify this work session so that we can attend those, so that we can hear what's being said?
Ma'am, the agenda is posted, and Laura Brown actually sends agendas out to approximately 150, 175 people. So you could give her an email address, and she could send you an agenda in advance of the work session meetings, and you could see everything on the agenda.
Have I missed a work session meeting? So we've had none.
We've had two.
No, we've had two. Yeah. Maybe you don't understand what a work session is.
I should have gotten an email, because she's got me on the rest.
Right, that's right.
I think it's a confusion about the work session is within the regular meeting.
Correct. They're including them within the regular meeting, but they're not typical work sessions.
They are open for public discussion or trustee discussion.
Oh, there's public discussion in them?
There's comments.
You don't allow that?
There's comments on the agenda.
Yes. I was looking for our chairperson to answer that.
When you asked a question, I was just giving you an answer.
Yes, there's comments on there.
So you're saying that the work sessions are listed on the agenda for a record meeting?
Correct.
They're the same work session?
Correct.
Correct.
Okay, and then just one more thing for the record. This is not what we voted for.
Thank you. Two more public comments?
Ron Savatino, Columbia. Meows, 395 Sunriggs Drive. I just wanted to bring to the board's attention that you're near the deadline for an action decision on whether this board wants to proceed this year with the community day event and fireworks, because it's kind of a deadline in executing an agreement with the fireworks provider. I would say that we would be willing to postpone until the park is open, but kind of observing some of the things going on here with controversy, would only do so with unanimous consent from the board. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Savatino.
I have a couple things to add to what I was going to ask, but I think what Mark's trying to say is that motions made that aren't seconded should be in the public record. The public needs to know what is mentioned in this meeting, and I can't think of a reason that it couldn't be just added as another line in the meeting minutes unless you didn't want the public to know. I don't really know why any board member wouldn't be given that respect and consideration. Anyway, Ms. McKee, you did mention that he emailed you a list of what he wanted to add. I'd like to know why any of those topics...
Well, we all got emails, but we went off the board. And some of them are on, and back to what I said, we're doing work sessions. So I'm not into taking our agenda and overloading it till we're here till 11 o'clock at night. So we are addressing things as we move along with some of the business here. We're not ignoring anybody, and we're not ignoring any agenda items. We're just... We are knowing about things in a proactive way. So he is getting things, so you may not get 10 things, just like I didn't give him 10 items when he was running the agenda. I would give him one or two because I understood there was things already set up. So I'm willing to work, and that's what we've done here. So, you know, there's quite a bit on here tonight.
I think myself and the public can be open. I didn't understand, but you told him here. If you got the email, you could have replied with an email saying, "That was your plan." He came to this meeting worried.
He's got the agenda, so are you up here just to say...
I'm asking.
Yeah, I understand.
Did I... You could have replied, but I'm asking, you know, maybe next time you could reply to him and let him know, "Hey, this is a little much. What's your number one? What's your number two? Let's limit what we put on there." I think that'd be good. I don't want to be here another block. But remind to him and let him know, "Hey, you know, these are meeting agenda items. There's a couple things on here that I think should be discussed in this meeting. Was planned, ones down..."
Yeah, we are.
So just communication. I stood up here, Mr. Vance, and asked you to set a meeting with... Put personal differences aside, and talk to Mr. Evans. I know you guys don't get along. I don't think you ever will get along. But professionally, we all work with people we don't like or situations we don't like.
Correct.
It's important you guys talk.
Correct.
And you didn't do that. And you did. I mean, I asked if you didn't.
Well, correct, but, you know, obviously professionally, if you are a professional and you experience somebody who exhibits unprofessional, slanderous behavior at times, you can choose not to put yourself individually in a situation with somebody like that. So that's what I chose to do.
But that's not working for the full board, and that's what you've mentioned.
I am working for the full board tonight.
Okay. Well, then after the meeting, if you're working for the full board tonight before you leave the premises, maybe you'll have to talk to Mr. Evans. That's tonight.
Well, thanks for your comments. I appreciate that.
And the only other thing I was going to mention was the one new business item, the Pike Street. I know with rezoning, they talk to a lot of the residences nearby the rezoning. I know the township may have the right to go through and lighten the street, but I was wondering if any effort had been made to communicate and make sure every person affected by Pike Street, if it is expanded by a brand, is going to be aware of what's happening before the Storage One situation happens. They don't know what's going on. So just want to find out if you communicated or what plan you had to communicate before any of those things. Thank you.
As far as I'm aware, none has been made to communicate with the community or the residents.
Judy Cafemeyer, 29-year-old in Kort. First of all, I'd like to say thank you to Mr. Vance and Joe and John for coming out to Royal Acres to assess the water issues that could be happening with the development that... The proposed development in my backyard. So I appreciate that. And, okay, I would like to remind the trustees that I've spoken a few times about the power that you have when it comes to establishing Etna Township as an exclusionary zone for future solar and wind developments. And again, these signs are going up around here, so it's coming our way. These facilities provide a very minimal amount of electricity when compared to the hundreds of acres that are destroyed to accomplish them. After all, this is Ohio, not the Sahara Desert. I request that our trustees initiate a resolution to protect Etna Township as an exclusionary zone. Last week, a group of Etna Township residents and other surrounding townships met with our state representative, Kevin Miller, and we voiced our concerns to Kevin. So, second point, at the monthly meeting on June 7th, Bill Lozier gave a presentation for the Pike Street project, was confused at the time about why millions of dollars were needed for a street in Etna. I'm still confused because this seems like one of those roads to nowhere. I hope that Mr. Lozier will return and provide a public forum for questions about this questionable project. And then, being on the planning commission, the land use, maybe Mr. Lozier also needs to meet with us as well, because if this affects Etna Township, this affects everything. What happens here could be, you know, what happens in the future, bigger picture. And I was unable to attend the June 21st meeting, but thanks to Mr. Evans' personal video equipment, I was able to access it on YouTube. I've heard Mr. Evans advocate for the township to provide this streaming service to the citizens because it would feature more cameras and a better sound system, and while providing more security. So I definitely would recommend that our trustees, our elected trustees, put forth a resolution to purchase this equipment soon. And then, finally, you know, what I've noticed on our agenda from time to time, you know, I see old business, and it seems to go into the old business graveyard, and it's never dug up again. You know, I've been wondering what's happening with the annexation prospects for Reynoldsburg. It was on the agenda months ago as new business. All of a sudden, it goes to old business and lives. So those are concerns, and you say have it at the business meetings, but I didn't hear it there either. So there are things that need to be discussed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Josh Yardley. I live at 96 Nantucket. This is my first Etna Township meeting. I was inspired to come because I've seen a number of the videos, so I really appreciate that's being done. Not really the best angle for any of us, I feel, so maybe a different angle. Might be worthwhile to invest some money in upgrading the technological infrastructure here with respect to the camera, maybe a few, maybe tapping in the microphones too, to the recording. Mr. Johnson, for example, I didn't hear you say anything in the last meeting, so maybe the microphone was on, maybe I hear you. I think also too, in the meeting, maybe it might be good to get like an LCD screen up where you guys could... Maybe put up some PowerPoint, really fancy technology, I know, but it's a good way to kind of keep everybody on the same page, make sure all the information is getting out that needs to get out, so we're all informed. Sorry, I feel like I'm rushing. I got three minutes, right? Also, with respect to technology, the website, I feel like that needs to be updated on just some of the minutes from the previous months that have already been approved. If we could get it out there. I'd really like to be able to track all of the things that have been discussed. There are programs like Monday.com, or Trello, or other sort of project management tools that allow you to kind of get a big picture overview of everything that's happening, who's been assigned what, what the deadlines are, what the status is. Mr. Vance, with all of your experience in various townships, maybe you've come across a tool like this that we could add to the website so we could all keep up to date with all that stuff. I just feel like there's more.
Thank you.
Maybe my time is over anyways. That's just a start. Yeah, I appreciate your time.
What's your last name again? I didn't catch it.
I'm sorry. Yardley, like this.
Okay, thank you.
And just to clarify, I do that as a resident. I've been asking for the township to do that.
Yeah.
They're not moving forward. I think we should move forward immediately.
I got it. I wore my most flattering pants.
And...
Chalk property, 10254 Tollgate Road. I agree with you, Yardley, that... Why is such a big secret about what goes on in these meetings? You have a handful of residents that are able to attend, but there are an awful lot of other people that would like to know what goes on. A lot of people can't get here at 6 o'clock in the evening. So why is it a big secret? Is the township broken? They can't afford to put a better system in? And I'm hearing a pair, and I would love to have a pair of speakers. So that's just my two cents.
Thank you.
Thank you. I agree.
I have two things that we have to release. You know, I hear what a lot of people are saying about Mr. Vance working with Martin Edwards. This isn't a personal attack at all, but if anybody did that to me at my job, it would go to HR. There's no HR for the township, so you have to decide how you can best work with people. And if that's in a public setting, that can be understandable, considering some of the things that I've heard. Yeah, from what I've heard, I wouldn't want somebody getting my face screwed and attacking. But I just want to make a point that I've had issues at work where somebody has come to me, and I would go to HR. It's not an option here, and I think people need to realize that. So working with somebody in a private setting that has made you feel uncomfortable, that shouldn't have to happen. And trustees cannot meet one-on-one without... It's against Roberts' rules, whatever it might be, the law or whatever.
Sunshine.
Sunshine, thank you. So I just want to make that point. I think that it's not very fair to attack somebody when they've been attacked and slandered about not working with somebody when they would have to meet with them privately. It's one thing to do emails. I think that you could email each other back and forth. That's a little different. There's a record of it. Keep that in mind. But I just wanted to make that point, because I don't think a lot of people are thinking about that aspect of it for Mr. Vance. So that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Those claims are false, and I can prove it.
I can pull up on Facebook.
Reports, public reports.
Well, no, there are public comments. There was an email that came in from Michelle Hall.
Okay, you can go ahead and read it.
Yes, it says, "From Michelle Hall, not sure the address, but it's right across the street there. Said, 'Good morning. See that Pike Street funding is on the agenda for tonight's meeting. I have not been able to attend the meetings, likely cannot attend tonight, but I wanted to voice my concerns of the Pike Street development. As a resident and a business owner in the area, I have great concerns over this. Just because you can do something doesn't mean you should. I've seen the plans for this, and it seems as though you will be pretty much on some residents' front porches. I do not see the need for a bike path. There are not many people riding bikes around here. I see the need for paving it and drainage sewer work that is needed. But to put wide sidewalks and a bike path in will greatly impact the residents of Pike Street and the business owners. I can tell you that the proposed curb on the southeast corner of Liberty and Pike Street will be destroyed in no time with the semis that back down Liberty for the businesses across the street from the town hall. You are also impacting their parking lot. They can take care of that end of it. That is technically the township's responsibility." They can take care of that end of it, that is technically the township's responsibility, and they have for about 14 years. I hope you consider how taking residents' front yards will impact them and the parking on Pike Street. Many homes do not have driveways, so they park where the sidewalk would be." Thank you, Michelle Hall.
Thank you.
Rachel's Lottery, 10141 Tollgate Road. First, I do want to thank you guys for coming out this week and looking at the storm drains and everything on my property. But also, for anyone that has missed the work sessions, I actually like it on the agenda and the option to have it in discussion. The one critique that I would have is that when you guys have the work session, I just notice a paragraph next to a line item, and it's just kind of reading the paragraph, which I could do on a piece of paper, and it's not an actual discussion. But I do like the fact that, like, let's say if there was a work session today, nothing would be voted on for a meeting or two, so that gives me time to think if I want to say something, to have an input. So I do like that structure of it. I just feel like we could do more as a township, just so I could understand maybe where people are coming from, other than just reading a piece of paper that I can do myself. But I do like the platform of us, so I do think that's a good direction that we're going. And then it's not just, well, you have public comment at the front of the meeting, and then they're going to vote on it no matter what, because they had their decision before you got here, right? So I do appreciate that, and I just wanted to state that.
Thank you. Want to report, oh, I'm sorry. Thank you.
John, Kinnear, 10785 Palmer Road. I'm kind of following Mark's suggestion. He, he put on Facebook his agenda for the night, and he had like 16 items, encouraged us all to come out and speak about it. One of them was a food truck at the park. I'm not sure what is motivating food, food truck at the park to encourage people to come out to the park. If you don't want to come out to the park, food trucks aren't going to do it. Maybe he'll get a free meal or something, I don't know what's in there for him, but he's pushing that pretty good. This new committee that just started that is supposed to establish some funds from The past trustees approved trash payment for all the residents in Etna Township, which impacted every resident that pays for their trash. We didn't have to pay, I think they did that for like three months. Mr. Weiner keeps complaining about the past trustees, he complains about the present trustees, he brags about what he does and like nobody else does. I think that money that come from that committee might touch more people paying for their trash than, you know, encouraging food trucks at the food wagon. And you always saying one bad apple runs the whole batch. It's happening, because it seems like we can't get anything done when he was president, and now that he's not, he's always bashing you guys, you two don't do nothing. But he has a list of all the things he does and would like to encourage to get done, so good luck. Thank you.
And just to clarify, the trash, not all residents' trash was paid, there were several developments where they had private, and so wasn't straight evenly.
If you choose not to have the trash.
Madam President, this is for comments. Anyone got comments?
Yes, please do, comments.
Okay.
Three other comments. We want to report, road reports was provided by Mr. S. Do you want to speak on that at all? And are you supervising on the, on the, you get anything to say?
They're just mowing, sealing the streets, and doing a great job. Do have an update on the road repaving, but deal with that in the road maintenance and old business.
Thank you. Zoning report was provided as well by Mr. Singleton. Did you hear any updates, Mr. Vance?
Yes, ma'am. The operations.
That you listed in under operations.
Right, so you wanted to stop.
Can we do zoning, because I have a question, if Stephen may have answered. Do you know, I inquired back on the 20th regarding ponds that were being maintained, do you know anything that's going on with that? I've not gotten a response from the city council. Are they being looked into, or?
Yeah.
They are?
We went out. So pictures, and then I think, I believe that he contacted the ones that did have pot, and made them aware of that they were involved.
That's all, okay, so that is being addressed, so, okay, thank you.
I'll turn it over to Mr. Vance for the operations report.
Thank you, Madam President. The first item on operations report is Scannell, the FedEx site. We did get an email today from Mr. Harrington. He indicated that he is making progress on his end investigating the stormwater concerns. The lighting shields are still on go for July, as far as we all know, and he is making headway with the specifics associated with potentially raising the wall. Our next meeting is scheduled within the next three weeks or so, probably towards the end of July. Tollgate Road, staff took a site visit. Thanks, Rachel, for your time to show us the situation there. We've got some follow-up things we need to pursue with Soil and Water, with the street department, the township, and we're going to be back in touch with Rachel before the August, the first meeting in August. Royal Acres Stormwater, Judy Cathmire, thank you very much for your time the other day. We had Soil and Water on-site with us to investigate the situation going on on the adjacent property. We're going to meet with them for some permit clarification later this week, and then we'll be back in touch.
I have a question on the other Stormwater.
Oh, let me finish my report, and then I'll welcome any questions. Storage One, we did do a site visit, we met with adjacent property owners. There are definitely some stormwater concerns associated with that site and associated with ponds at the corner, one corner of that site. It appears that the lighting is causing some negative situations, I would say, at this point in time. Once again, we're going to pursue a visit with the property owner, the development owner, and discuss some of our issues, and we're also basically acclimating ourselves as to the final development approvals to make sure that these development sites have been developed in accordance with what was agreed to at those times, and we will continue to follow up with this board of trustees going forward. And with that, any questions?
Yes, I've got a few. On Scannell, I understand that they're still working on that. Are we only firm that we are not going to proceed with any incentives on the second building until these are resolved for residences? I know they were looking at doing a Jet 7 amendment and giving, giving the, you know, incentives to.
Right. Well, what are the status, what are the status of those development applications? Have they submitted any paperwork that you're familiar with?
No, but I was in the middle of discussions with amending Jet 7 prior to being removed, and I'm not sure where that stands, but my, my stance at that point was that we should not move forward with any economic incentives until unless those items are addressed, and I just wanted to see if that's still the board's position.
Okay. And, and I would say, you know, all in due course, when they submit something, we can consider something and get back to them. And in the meanwhile, we have other items that we can be working on, which we continue to work on.
So there's no, because I was in active talks with that, with the Jet 7 amendment.
Okay, well, I have no idea what that has to do with what I'm doing here.
Because they're interrelated.
Well, one trustee negotiating with a development entity outside the confines of the board of trustees, I don't think is, is something that, that I'm looking to push forward at this point in time, but the township does have flexibility. We do have things that we can use on our behalf when negotiating, I agree, so I'll just leave it at that.
Okay, I was looking for the board, you, you don't make the decisions here, I was looking for an answer from the board, but.
But I would encourage the board to provide answers or positions on things that are actually real, things that have been put forward for discussion.
They have been put forward on discussion, we've had many discussions with the developers Scannell about the Jet 7 amendment, with Reynoldsburg, Red, Bestman, I'm knowing so, but, okay.
Well, Madam President, I'm not going to argue.
The other question regarding the stormwater, I had been working on it, there's numerous implications. I was not aware that you were dealing with Tollgate and with Royal Acres on that, and I've been in contact with Soil and Water. I was bringing to them all the properties, all the locations to deal with these. Are there any others, or do you want to take on all of the locations? I'm not sure, again, since we don't communicate, I want to do the best for the township and the residents, but I can't, it's very difficult if there's no communication. So what I need to know is, do you want all the locations so you can deal with them, since you're dealing with Soil and Water now? Or do you just want these two, and I'll deal with the rest unless you guys want to pick a couple of those too? I think it's more, it's better if one person does it and addresses the issue, because you're dealing, my plan was have Soil and Water come out and just address all the issues going around. So what's the board want to do with this, since we direct the consultant? Will you take out all the locations, the multiple on Palmer, on Smokey Road?
Madam President, I mean, if, if we want to discuss specifics, maybe we can come back at the work session. These are all locations that have been discussed for the last two months at the very least, so obviously staff is following up on these concerns. Rachel has been at the meetings, Judy Cathmire's been at the meetings, FedEx has been at the meetings.
Stephen Spencer's discussed the board directs your initiatives, they have him so far in most of the things he's submitted, so that's what I'm saying, should we direct him to deal with all the locations since he's taken out the two? Wouldn't that be more productive in dealing with the same Joe Jarvis with Soil and Water and the others?
Madam President, I don't know how you can deal with all locations at one time. I think you need to take priorities, work through priorities, continue to add things to your list, and go down the list, and that's what I'm doing as your management consultant. So my question is to make a motion to direct me to do everything all at once, I don't think is going to be a productive thing to do.
So my question is, do you want that list?
I, I think you should just submit his list.
Send him take over.
But you're asking, I mean, he's worked on some of them, he's got progress with those, I guess.
We welcome information, we welcome information, we just can't work on everything all at one time.
But you have to communicate to get information, that's what I'm saying.
Well, you are giving information this evening, and we're at a meeting this evening, so if you have a list you'd like to provide, I will take it.
All right, I'll provide that. Like I said, I just want resolutions for the residents, these have been going ongoing for a long time, and they need to be addressed, so if you want to address them, but we need to address it properly. And then on the, I'm glad, again, looking at the Storage One, I've been looking at it before, but now you're doing it. What about Blue Monkey and the motel adjacent? I've not heard any update. I don't know if Stephen has any idea of what's going on there about the light trespass in that area. Are you aware or working on anything with that?
Yes, yes.
What's the update on that?
Well, the update is we're in, the, the next step will be for us to meet with the adjacent property owner who has not contacted staff in regard to the lights, as far as I'm concerned. But we are going to reach out and see if they have some information that would be of value dealing with the Blue Monkey. But these situations that we're currently working on, which do take a lot of time and a lot of follow-up, are taking a majority of, of the time we have available for stormwater situations. And as we finish these, we will add additional, which we are with the Blue Monkey.
Light trespass doesn't require an adjacent property owner to complain, I've gotten numerous complaints about that, and it's clear violation of the light trespass, so I think that needs to be handled.
All right, well, Madam President, we could take the code book, and we could sit in front of every house in the township, and we could find 10 or 15 things wrong with it. Normally, we let things come to our attention so that they become a priority in the mind of the adjacent property owner. We don't go looking to each property to see what we can enforce.
And I was informed by the residents on this matter, that's why I informed our zoning inspector, so it has been brought to us.
He was a resident, Mr. Vance?
I, I did.
Okay, so that we would like to know something.
But it, it's a little shocking that you won't address an issue that's been brought up.
And once again, Madam President, just because something's said at a public meeting does not mean that it's true. We are addressing a plethora of things right now, and I think we're doing a good job of it, and we'll continue to, to do all we can with the 24 hours that we're given in each day.
I provided the zoning inspector with light meter readings, I, I go out there, when it rains, I go out there and see the light. I bring a lot of information.
All right, well, I'm not going to, I'm not going to debate that kind of thing, so.
Okay. I'll forward you the list of the drainage issues.
And we will mix it in as we can.
Hopefully sooner than later.
Hopefully. Anything else, trustee Evans?
No, I just prioritize your time on the big stuff like this, instead of, like I said, it's at the NCA meeting, when Mr. McKee took it over.
We're talking about zoning issues right now.
We're talking about your time, man, just one second, so, thank you.
Cemetery, there's no update there. Parks and Recs, just want to inform that JBW closes on Wednesday, July 6th. And Snyder Property, the Garrett property closed last Thursday. The Langley property, everything, right now, it's sitting in escrow. The township has done everything that we needed to be, to get things done as far as the park closure, so we're sitting in a good place right now.
Isn't the Langley property still contingent on sewer?
No, it's not.
Spacity?
No, no.
On the development?
No, it's preliminary plan, and it's sitting right now in escrow. Fire district?
Uh, nothing, yeah. I do have a question on, it's kind of related to parks and that, there was a discussion about the park building, that barn that may have to be demolished.
Yeah.
A resident had suggested, which I think is a good idea, we'll talk to the fire department to see if they can use that, if we have to demolish it for practice, I don't know if they can practice pumping from the pond to deal with it, or ending with that, as someone talked about, if we have to raise the barn.
If we have to.
If we have to, I'm not saying just do it to do it, but.
Right.
If we have to, that, and then on the fire district, you said there was no update. I did see in the media, there was the announcement about Hebron being, going into the West Look Fire Department, I think that's pretty big. How's that affect us, if at all?
It doesn't, I'm not sure how much of the details I could share with that, but it's a possibility that David Hebron would be part of our district.
I think that was announced.
Was it announced? I didn't see it was announced.
Yeah, it was announced, my, my concern is they were, their own fire district, they had a 9.0 levy, and they were looking for additional funds, and they couldn't sustain themselves. The West Look Fire Department's taking on Hebron and going to collect an 8.9 mil levy. I'm concerned that we're going to be subsidizing them if they couldn't do it.
Don't worry, you're not subsidizing them. Guaranteed.
Do you bring that information for us, or?
Yes, I'll, we might do something once we have all that, but you don't have to worry about that, we are not subsidizing other places just to take them over.
Okay, that was my concern, a lesser mil, when they were looking for more, and so I, I just want to make sure that we maintain our services and we're not paying for the people.
Yes.
Sir, you want all the Jeds, or the Jeds?
Madam President, if I can?
Yes, sir.
We continue to meet with our development attorney, we also recently met with the folks in Reynoldsburg, we're focusing on annual revenues, anticipated debt obligations that would utilize, or propose to utilize, Jeds resources. We're also looking at the legal bills that were paid by the township since, I think, 2013 is when they started, to verify that the township was reimbursed, as has been discussed probably since 2013. So we just need to put some specifics associated with those discussions and put them forth for trustee review and. for trustee review and anticipated discussion of next steps, if next steps are necessary.
And where's the jet seven amendment to a pilot?
I'm not, I'm not familiar with that.
Ms. McKee, are you familiar with that?
What you're up to, you have some information you want to share with us about jet seven?
I don't have, you took control.
What is the question?
My question is, there was discussions when, when I was involved, there were discussions of changing the jet seven into a pilot.
What happened?
Paying in lieu of taxes, okay? Because FedEx doesn't want a tax on their employees. So we're in the middle of discussion between Reynoldsburg.
Oh, we are familiar with that, yes. And the proposal is still being vetted by Reynoldsburg, as far as we understand it.
Well, it should be vetted by us. We're a party to that. So I would hope we're actively in those negotiations too.
And I didn't indicate that the township will not be involved. I just said currently, the city of Reynoldsburg is taking a look at what was proposed.
Okay, well, I think our interests need to be looked at also, and like I said, I was actively involved in that before, when I brought it up, you guys were all asking me where it's at. I'm just concerned that these items are being addressed for our interest and our residents, so.
Do you have a copy of the pilot agreement? The starting one? That we're talking about?
No, because they proposed that they wanted, they wanted to do a pilot payment, and that's what Elbers and Elbers was working on, but now we're using Craig's. And the whole thing was all payments, whatever they would have paid, they would pay a pilot, the payment of lieu of taxes. So they would figure all that out, but working through that with the agreement and ensuring that if FedEx moves out, that it's still applicable, the jet to the next.
Right.
So that's what, I was asking for that update, but you guys were.
Well, trustee Johnson, it's not that difficult. It's just cutting a check. That's all they're talking about. Who's gonna cut a check to pay for the income tax? And how are they gonna make sure that that check is gonna stay consistent with whatever the income tax amount would be? And so Reynoldsburg is looking into what they're potentially gonna become comfortable with, so that they can make recommendations to us for our consideration, for your consideration.
All right, it's not that simple, when you have a few lawyers trying to figure it out. And then, is there any discussion on these jets? Because I know we can't have jet Z's anymore of all possible alternate partners? Because to maximize our revenue, we can use other partners at maybe five, six percent instead of 20%. We're paying Reynoldsburg, especially in lieu of the annexation inquiries. I think that should be something that we might be able to use that extra 14, 15% for the township. And I think that should be a discussion of the board.
Do you have any proposals from other potential options?
Would you like me to speak to those entities? I know that was removed also.
If you have, well, as a trustee, it's my understanding, you can speak with whoever you want to. If you have any specifics, it could be in the best interest of the township. You know, you have opportunities every couple of weeks that you take advantage of at these meetings to speak about them, so, you know, I would say bring them forward.
So the board agrees that all trustees can speak on economic development and negotiate with entities, is what he's saying?
No, what I'm saying is the board discusses the agenda every couple of weeks, and you do expand on your agenda items that you are promoting. That's all I'm saying.
It doesn't seem the same, but, all right.
First, what we, officer report?
I don't really have one tonight.
Just take the public one?
But I would like to be included on the discussions for the jets that, that we're negotiating payments and interest rates and debt obligations for, for planning purposes, because if I don't have those numbers, I won't be able to certify funds by year end.
Absolutely.
It's okay, I'm fine.
Absolutely.
Yeah, anything financial, anything to, we should be copying?
Understood, just like.
But many, many times she's not, I'm just saying that we've got to think of her as an integral part, especially with anything, just copy your financial. Anything financial. You have a resolution?
Yeah, there's a resolution to approve the purchase orders.
Yes. Wanting to pay bills?
Yeah.
Are you making that motion?
I am not. I can't.
Yeah, you can, but yeah.
Just going, I don't think I should do it.
Well, I don't know.
Okay, I'll just do it.
I move to pay the bills as presented. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Discussion?
Roll call?
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes.
You have to do the purchase of these two.
Resolution for this, like, what we have here, is that it?
I make a motion that we, resolution for number 22-07-05, would that be number one, correct?
Yes.
Number one?
Mm-hmm.
To approve purchase orders as presented. I'll second.
Discussion?
Roll call?
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
And your whole business harassment policy 14.5, is there a motion to approve the discrimination, harassment, and bullying policy as presented?
We don't have a resolution, we're staying on motion, is that correct?
Just looking for.
I think you can do with the motion, because if you read the whole handbook, then you can still defend and draft a resolution.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve the discrimination, harassment, and bullying policy as presented.
I'll second.
Discussion?
This goes, this is part of the handbook, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, this will go added to the handbook, or something to our handbook?
On the handbook, that the.
Employee handbook?
Yes.
Okay.
This was one of the items that I was discussing that was on a workshop, as Rachel indicated, was just read a paragraph, and there was no discussion, none of that. So I just wanted to say that I think we should use workshops to kind of pare things out, to make it better, to understand why things are, because I don't believe Jeff or I had any input with this.
Did you guys get a copy of this? Was this not emailed to you? Was this emailed to Mr. Evans?
It was emailed to me, but I said we had no input, that's part of the creation. But my question last time, and it still stands, is were there any areas that could have gone one way or the other, or things that were left out that you felt were questionable, that we might want to include, or vice versa?
Well, you could have replied. I mean, there was an email, that's why it's not a work session. So you could have replied if you felt something that needed to be changed on this document that our attorneys put together.
I don't know what our attorney stated in the creation of this. This is what I'm saying, you're dealing with the attorney. When I was dealing with the NCA attorney, there were various items of reasons why we changed that. All I'm asking is, were there any sections of this that he said, well, it could go one way or the other, or he recommended and you didn't include?
This is what he recommended, and, yeah, this is what he recommended.
The labor attorney, Madam President, provided this draft.
Correct.
The consideration that the labor attorney felt it's, it was a well-rounded policy for us to initiate, and policies can be amended as time goes by.
So there were no, it was just presented and, in this form initially?
The labor attorney presented it in that form. I read it, I didn't have any issues with it, and everybody else did.
This is our labor attorney?
Yes.
Correct, our labor attorney.
He asked me to take over me with.
That's all I'm asking, is if there was any discussion on that, and apparently there was, so. I have great confidence in Ben Albrecht, and that's why I brought it up.
Yep. Roll call?
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes. Consideration of closing costs on the adjustment of the park land. I'm moved to authorize the payment for Title Connect Agency for $3,416.12 for the closing cost of the park property.
He wanted to add, to cut the check. I'm sorry? He wanted to add to cut the check outside.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. I wanted to, yeah, sign the check. Can you, we want to cut a check outside of the business tonight, business meeting.
I believe it's required tomorrow, or the next day?
Yes, it is. It is required. The closing is Wednesday, July 6.
And this was something that came up last week, correct, Madam President? My recollection?
Yes, I believe that was actually on Friday.
I need a second.
I'll second.
Okay.
I second.
Hold on, hold on. Yeah, let's, can we second? Can I get a second?
I do.
Okay, thank you. Discussion?
Is there, what's the reason for the increase in closing costs?
Okay, so a title company at times will have some changes, and because of that, there was some changes that took place that was out of our control as a township. There was nothing with the township.
Do you know what those changes were?
So the check, I don't know what they were, but there was some changes in the document. And our attorneys looked over, so everything was fine. So there's, because of the late date in closing, there's an additional funding that we have to pay out, which is the $3,416.12. $3,022.76 was the Garen property, and the other, the JBW, was $93.42.
And Madam President, if I may?
Yes, sir.
I believe some of the additional costs were related to the timeframe associated with how long it's taken to get to the closing, and some of the fees had been increased, but that's my informal understanding. I just know this is requested the township so that we can actually close on this park land.
Yes. So I have a lab, a park. We'll get this. Check out, have it ready for us tonight, so tomorrow when I come to the closing.
What time is the closing?
I'll have to be here about 9:30.
I'll have it up there.
Oh, thank you.
I need to break out the more details. Anybody? Can I ask you? Anyways?
That would be, John Singleton. So that's where it came from.
I didn't see anything.
I either.
Yeah, I didn't.
And it's supposed to be an application?
Yes.
Is that the same title company from the board?
Yes. So it's Title Connect Agency.
And we have the amount, correct?
Correct, $3,000.
And you said, and it was a purchase order, because I can't issue it, the purchase order is big. So can we just change it on the form that the board provided us to add it?
To the one that you have now? Why don't you amend that one?
I mean, it needs to be on the.
We can revise this motion, just the issue to give you the authorization to do the purchase order too, so why don't we just recite the motion? You can just do it all, put the purchase order to allow you to cut the check outside the meeting.
So, I mean, they used to pass it that way before, where they just said to cut the check outside the meeting.
And that, so what?
We can just revise the language of that motion, Julie, and make it work voice. If, if.
So what's?
Draw one, Jeff will withdraw the motion, they can start another.
Just a small motion, just so you can add it to the.
I draw a second, so.
Okay.
So right now, I have it, that it's moved to authorize payment to Title Connect Agency for $3,416.12 for the closing cost for the park property, and to cut the check after the meeting for closing tomorrow, and to issue the purchase order?
Yes.
Would that work, Julie?
Yeah, can you give me a breakdown again, the Garen property and JBW?
But it's only one check you're gonna do. Okay, so Garen is $3,322.70. JBW is $93.42.
Thank you.
Yep. So it's gonna be trustee McKee move that? Trustee Johnson seconded it?
Yes.
Seconded, yes.
And that language works for what you needed for the record to close up? Roll call?
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes.
Now, one question on that, are you just providing a check, or are you just signing closing documents? Because I don't, do we have to authorize you to sign closing documents outside the meeting?
Yeah.
So, Mr. Carroll had to do that on the others? So I just, on the other closings? In your view, you had to authorize him to sign the closing documents outside the meeting?
Madam President, I think we're down to the last closing. Would you ask to sign any closing materials in the recent past?
Well, yeah, I did have to sign a document on Friday, just to say that we.
I just want you to be cautious, just to see how it operates.
I think, I think we need board action on some, well, many special approvals, not just one trustee. Do you make an action for it?
Oh, you could have came to that. You could have in here and did it yourself, but it didn't matter. It just needed a signature that says, we need a trustee here to sign.
But I'm saying, the board should authorize the person to do that. But I'll make a motion to approve trustee McKee to sign the closing documents for the park land purposes outside.
I'll second.
Discussion?
I have a discussion.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes. I turn the meeting over. Trustee Evans regarding the pavement management group.
All right, as you know, we contracted with pavement management group to assess our roads. We were delayed in getting that started, so we're kind of late in the paving season. I provided the final reports to all the trustees, and included also a spreadsheet detailing all the roads. I've got a closeout meeting with pavement management group Friday at 3:30, where we'll go over their specific recommendations, some of their estimates and that. Majority of our roads are in good, in excellent condition, or some that are, need a lot of attention. One of the main areas is quite improper on the east side. This is one where the OPWC grant, you know, wasn't made. So I'm not sure if we'll be able to hold for that this year, if we're gonna be pursuing these grants. But in preparation for which roads we do want to address, I believe need to request the engineering assistance, and I'm not sure if it's proper to bring a resolution here that wasn't approved to be added to the agenda, but to request for an engineer's estimate, and for them to prepare bid forms, we need to make a proof of resolution to request engineering assistance. So I would move to approve resolution 22070502, resolution to request engineering assistance. And attached to that is the township request for engineering assistance form. The roads have not been selected yet, and that would be board approval. But I wanted to ensure that this is approved, so we can get possibly Jared or engineer timeline is scheduled to be able to do this, instead of waiting for some. Again, paving season, this should have been done maybe winter or spring, but like I said, it was delayed, so we're moving as fast as we can right now. And once we have the closeout meeting Friday, I'll have an idea of some of the roads, and based on budgeting, that'll kind of determine, I guess, where we kind of go, if we want to, you know, what kind of quality we want to maintain all of our roads at.
Do you have a list of roads that have it? Great for you. I don't think it's fair to give everything that we have and say, here, can you do this?
No, that's what the closeout meeting is for. The pavement management group, what they do is, they assess, that they go around, capture video, and that's part of the deliverables. You can go to any, any road, and you can see what it is. They base it on what kind of damage, what kind of wear. And like I said, Pilot Township just did this, and there's a lot. And like I said, Violet Township just did this, and there's a lot of different options as, as far as doing our newer roads of just kind of putting protective sealant on that, extending the life to crack sealing, to just repaving, you know, grinding and repaving. But in his report, there's sections that one, I believe 1% have failed, and those are within Edna proper here. There's about 3% that are very poor or that are poorer, and about 3% that are very poor, about 30% that are, I guess, fair, or maybe a little less than that, looking at... I tried to reserve percentages. But we definitely have to, I believe, do Edna proper, some parts on Palmer, some parts on Refugee. And a lot of it kind of depends too of what we're doing on Pike Street that I still have a lot of questions and concerns about what we're planning on Pike Street at feet $90,000. And where we can... The cost to cap it was like $84,000. So that should kind of factor into what we're doing there. But again, once I talk to them Friday, we'll have more information as far as kind of the direction they, they recommend to maintain our roads over time at a consistent level.
Yes, sir.
For the record, you had started a resolution. Are you going to just repeat it now? You have all this discussions out?
So you could do it... Yeah, so I'll move, I'll withdraw my other one. I'll move to approve Resolution 22070502, Resolution to Request Engineering Assistance. Is there a second? And in, in order to get the assistance, we need to submit this form of resolution. And that includes getting the engineer's estimate and putting together a bid pad.
So...
Yes?
In the past, it's only, and I confirm this, but Jared, they do have visited the past tonight, you can have them come in and sign that outside the meeting, once you know exactly the road you're going to do, and he will accept it as long as you have two of the trustees, two out of the three trustees sign it, that would be correct, if that helps anymore.
Right. What I'm saying is by signing this tonight, he knows it's coming down Pike, that we're going to have a specific street, so he's... But they're busy, the county engineer is busy, so if there's the... We already delayed to Pavement Management Group, but they can want their team. So that puts us behind, so we can't, we can't keep having these delays. And one of our main responsibilities is roads, is township. And my plan is after Friday, sharing recommendations of Pavement Management Group with the Board. We can have a special meeting to approve which roads, but I was going to send to the engineer a list of suggested roads, and then we can determine based on those, those costs.
So you know what the roads are? The list, I mean, I don't...
No, I...
This is a branchy here, but, and then what is your budget for those roads?
That is what the Pavement Management Group will provide Friday in the closeout, and then also Jared will have an engineer's estimate. So we can, if we want to do the three worst roads, we can do four, and maybe that fits within our budget and it's better, or we'll just choose two if the costs are so high. Costs are continuing to go up. They just went up for asphalt this month, July 1st, to get. So I don't... I'm going to provide the information, the Board is going to make the decision, so I'm not sure what the essence is.
So you're discussing this, and she's got to deal with it.
I can...
You need a second, so do I do a second?
Well, there has to be a second.
They have a second, if it matters, so... I mean, you're still discussing about second, then I would...
I, I would just like to see a list of roads.
Are we going to second so we can discuss properly?
All right, I'll second it. But I need to... We in the past, what we've done is we presented with a list of roads. I'd lower the, the trustees over the Township roads, which would be you at this point. And we were sent with a list of roads, and we sent it to the engineer. You're saying you won't have this till Friday?
Correct. I have under... I'm not a road guy. I, I don't construct roads and that. That's why you rely on professionals, the engineers, the blah, blah.
I understand.
We're, we're trying to, instead of in the past, just driving around saying this, that, the other. They have a comprehensive system that, that they'll make recommendations based on budget of do this to the road, it'll, the longevity will be increased. We're, we're trying to do it on a systematic approach, and I, I know in here, it states clearly what are the worst roads. So you can go for the ones that failed, that, all that. But we don't know what the budget or what the costs are, so that's what they're going to do, and also that. So I mean, if you want...
I guess what I'm looking for is a, a group of roads we could... I hope, like I said, I don't want to send too many roads. But if we have a line of roads that we're going to send, then would you make recommendations of roads? Are you saying you want to have it till Friday at all, so you can...
The ones that failed, the ones that...
So you're doing my failed.
Well, yeah, list very specifically here, the ones that have failed. They even show you map, color coded. So the ones that failed, very poor and poor, I think should be placed on there, however, is based on budget. What are we going to spend? Are we going to try to go for grants? Are we going to actually follow through on OPWC grants this year? And if so, when's the deadlines? Is someone working on grants? Is, is a consultant being directed to work on grants such as this?
Usually the road department supervisor worked on the grants in the past.
On all the grants?
The road department supervisor, everyone's done the grants in the past.
And that's the one that failed too after it lost the election, so...
Well, Mark, the grant wasn't all that long ago, but you don't seem to want to understand.
But what I'm saying is if we're working on grants, we have a resource...
I'd be more than happy to work with them.
We have a resource in the, of the consultant that should be familiar with grants, road work and stuff, I'll assume. And that's what... I can't initiate grants on my own, so that's why I'm asking. Are we pursuing grants for OPWCs?
Yes, sir.
Madam President, I can try to help the pavement move along, and, and we do have a, a grant on tonight's agenda.
Yes.
That we are pursuing a 70, 70% grant for an $8 million project, so we are moving forward with grants. Does the 15, what did the $15,000 include that this paving assessment company provided services for?
Did you read the proposal?
I'm, I'm asking you if you could just tell me, what, what did, what did the $15,000 cover?
The full deliverables are within the proposal. What they do is analyze the roads.
Correct.
Rank them.
Correct.
And based on the, what cost it, what the life expectancy is, and that, will take a rec, make a recommendation based on budgeting, costs and that. And say you want your roads to be excellent. We're all rated excellent. They'll come up with a program that this is what you need to do. If you want to accept fair roads, this is what you have to do to maintain that.
Right, right. So at this point in time, they've ranked all the records, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Have you reviewed the report and the spreadsheet?
What is the paving? Do we have a paving budget, budgeted for 2022? Well, what did the town and trustee, the board of trustees budget for 2022 for paving? Anything? All right, so at this point in time, we have complete flexibility.
It's right around a million, I think.
Well, we don't have complete flexibility because of...
To discuss anything you would like to discuss, you've got complete flexibility. So what, what is a resolution asking for?
Did you not receive it?
I'm asking a question. If you can just, I'm trying to keep this moving along for us so that we can get to paving in 2022. That's our share goal.
So as I stated, the resolution is approved submitting the Township Request for Engineering Assistance as required by the engineer to provide an engineer's estimate and provide the bid form.
So they are done with the $15,000 worth of work? That is, they...
No, we, no, we still have the closeout meeting Friday.
Right.
And going over their recommended budgets and what level, and so they, they're done capturing the information and analyzing it. Now it's working with what are we going to do, what budgets, what that aspect of it.
Okay, so the roads have been ranked, and I would, I would suggest, you know, I think those rankings just surfaced in the last couple of days. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that's a recent past thing.
Last week?
Okay, well, if we could bring them forth, take a look at them, I would predict that specifically we could, you know, identify some of the worst roads at the next meeting and push forward to get them paved in 2022, if that's possible. It is late in the year. You are correct.
Which, which that's what Friday will do at the closeout meeting.
So you're having this for us, right? On Friday, that they recommend that we...
Our closeout meeting is Friday, and that's when we'll be provided the information. We, we could do, we could make the fair roads excellent. We could make the good roads excellent. We could make, but do we want to? It's, it's a, it's a cost benefit analysis of the longevity of the road, of what do you, what are you doing to that road? Because you could add sealers and, and stuff to good roads to extend the life of it, to rejuvenate it. Do we want to do it? Is it cost effective or not? So that's what they're going to discuss. Violet Township is doing it. Violet Township uses Pavement Management Group, and they decided to move forward with all their recommendations of treating the, the excellent roads and good roads to maintain their viability and extend their life. We have done that as a township, so that's why we're going to be discussing with the professionals to see what their recommendation is.
Right.
And what their expense costs are.
So an, an excellent road is two inches or an inch and a half of overlay over a good foundation, as far as I understand it. Sidewalks, stormwater, things like that, or auxiliary.
You're basing on condition, because there's, there's difference from weight, stress, crap. There, there's a lot of factors in that, and that's what they're basing it.
It can be very complicated. You are correct.
And that's why you have the professionals to do that.
And my experience with...
And open the roads.
My experience with bidding on paving is majority of the time you bid out materials, and then once you get the costs associated with materials, then you can use those per cubic yard costs, and you can take a look at what you have to pave, and you can figure out how much money you have and how much you can actually get done. So I don't, I don't see the need to debate, you know, the complete restoration of, of every street based upon what I know in my professional experiences. But I would suggest that delay this, something like this move forward at the next meeting because we are running out of time to do paving in 2022.
And that's why I've been pushing this from the beginning.
Right, and we just get this first opportunity tonight to help you push it along, and I understand that's what, what we're doing.
This, when I got this, I forwarded to the Board, and you had ample opportunity to...
You just indicated...
Or, or ask me questions before this meeting, before...
I, I sincerely do not want to argue.
Not, not bad.
Oh, okay, John, I see.
Right, right. And you're having a meeting Friday to, to close out the process. So the process is just coming to an end, and so we want to keep it moving so we can get to the next steps.
And that's why I proposed the resolution, so that Jared knows this is coming, and we could proactively put the three lowest classifications on there, and then depending on the recommendations of the Pavement Management Group, the professionals, of additional. I don't, it, this isn't that complicated.
No, it's not. No, it's not.
That's what I'm saying. So I, I don't know why there's...
What is the cost?
There's no cost to get an engine, for the engineers to do this.
The only thing about it is it's vague, instead says, "We wish to obtain engineer's estimate," instead of forms for the repair or surfacing of some roads," is all it says.
Of the various... Correct. And so they'll be provided a list.
Of some roads.
So I mean, it's... Looking back at the request for the OPWC on Edna Parkway was very vague also, or not Edna Parkway, Edna proper.
OPWC, we listed all the roads, but Pike Street, it wasn't made. In the past, the...
The engineer's request.
Always had a list of all the roads.
I just looked at it today.
I know she went there, Mark. She always had a list of roads.
Is this based on what you're going to get Friday? Is that what you're trying to say? Based on information that you're providing by this group on Friday? This is what, that's the list that you're going to give them for a bit?
All I want to do is give Jared forewarning and lock in his time that he knows this is coming, because time is of the essence. I don't understand. If you want to put the, the three lowest categories of roads in here right now and then amend it before Friday, this... I want to get it moving. I don't know why this is so controversial.
It's not.
It's just, that's what I'm saying.
You got it Friday, I mean, this...
I'm, I'm just going to... Are we going to have a special meeting to... If we approve this tonight, we can forward it to Jared. And again, if you want to list the, the three lowest classification roads in there to give them a head start, but some of them, like Palmer, it's a section here, it's a section there, but... I mean, you could state it in public.
I'm just looking, we're asking for supplement, we're asking for a, a big, big thing in this, and to say this is what, so he knows it's coming? And that's what gets me here.
And then what, what...
This has to be approved by the Board.
Right.
Yes.
So I can add the list of roads to that outside Board and just say...
So you want to...
Provide those roads, and the Board will make the final decision of what we do.
So you want to present them with...
If you want to have a special meeting to approve the roads that I sent to Jared, we can, but I think it's...
Because that's back to what you're saying. We as a Board should be able to approve those roads.
But these aren't approved to pave, these are just to get estimates. You want to, you want Board approval to get estimates on certain roads?
No, that's, that's not going to cost us.
That's what you're asking.
No, no.
That's my motion. And it's been seconded, so any other discussion?
Roll call. Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson? Ms. McKee?
What?
I don't think Jeff answered.
I didn't answer.
You don't...
I'm going to stay on this one because I'm not sure what to do at this point.
On this?
Madam President, I would suggest that we take a look at this as a priority tomorrow.
On the floor.
He has, he has one more question. You have to do the, whether you're going to...
I'm going to abstain.
Madam President, I, I would say that, and, and obviously, we're, we're going to look into this in the immediate future so we can do paving in 2022.
I want, Laura, you may know, on Robert's Rules of Order, you just need a majority, and I don't believe you include the abstentions, correct? So did that pass?
I've never had to abstain like that. You're going to look in your book, you got it right there on top of your table.
Do we want to take a recess?
Yes. In fact, Mark, I have...
While you recess, we can set up for Bill Lausher's presentation.
Yeah, this would be a good time.
We have a presentation?
Yes, correct.
So I think you have to move to recess.
That's what I would like to do, is I would like to move to recess.
I'll second that. Roll call, please.
Mr. Evans?
Roll call.
Five minutes?
How long? Bill, we're taking a setup. We'll just recess, and we'll let it...
Yeah.
Roll call.
It's up to the Board if you guys want to have a presentation. I mean, we should last week. I don't really have a presentation or something. If that's what you want to do.
Are you seeking direction, basically, tonight to submit that?
We have residents here, so you are, they're there, you can see your presentation.
We have a projector ready, and the gentleman's just going to be talking. Is he here?
They want to develop that problem.
Laura, like 44, colon, 3.
I'm moved to come out of break our session.
You're coming out recently.
Recession.
I'll second.
How old is it? 7:36. Roll call?
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson? Ms. McKee?
Yes.
About this extension of voting, Laura found an article in the Ohio Township Magazine, and also I pulled up Section 44, colon, 3. Means that the votes exclude blanks or extensions. So it appears that because there's two extensions, the one yes vote is the majority, so it passes. And what we're going to do to ensure, send it to the prosecutor, however, it's not a question of law.
I'm going to do the resolution and show the votes the way they were. She can sign it to your paperwork.
Yeah, but it's just, it has to follow Robert's rules.
Yes.
So.
Okay.
Which number was that event?
Uh, two.
That was two, so this will be three.
Oh, three?
Hey, how are you? Hey, Madam President, one, one thing. Just for clarification, we are going to have a paving agenda item regardless...
Right.
On the next meeting agenda, correct? Because we, okay, sounds good.
Thank you. I'm going to turn this off.
We have old business tonight. Refugee road.
I turned to me and you, trustee Evans, for the refugee road project.
Okay, all right. Just, well, I'll make it quick. Um, just an update on that, we was at a recent meeting, and we're, we're looking forward to institute the IGA intergovernmental agreement, two and three, to kind of move forward with financing. Right now, we've just got the MOU with them, an initial agreements. Nothing's really binding us to the financing that right now. We're looking at securing that financing. There, there was a change, the original calculation for the yearly amounts, used the incorrect calculator, mortgage calculator, instead of, these are semi-annual payments, so we're looking at the high side, instead of, I believe it was 240, it's actually 300,000. And on the low side, I think we went from 180 to 200s. But the biggest development is the developer TPA, the development purchase fell through on that property, that we were anticipating using the JED revenue to pay the financing amount with, and they were going to also contribute four to $500,000 towards that initial 3.5 million. There was some discrepancy with sewer capacity, where landowners didn't want to give them more time to secure that, and TPA didn't want to move forward with the closing, yet there's no guaranteed sewer within a certain amount of time. So, uh, one, one seller did, one seller didn't, so right now, that development is off. It's a little concerning to me, again, we were basing paying for this with the JEDs through that. Now, will there be replacement development there? Maybe, when, who knows? So I think the board needs to discuss how we're moving forward, if we're moving forward as if nothing's occurred, and just hoping that development will come in there and, and pay for that, or other changes that there's always been planned to be there. And also, maybe taking into consideration now Main Street, we were talking about federal funding down before, 70, getting exchanged there, how that might impact it. So I just wanted to bring that to the board. I'm not sure any of you have had discussions with Mr. Lozier, or Petazola, or other entities on that, but I, I think it's a big deal, and we should discuss it.
And Madam President, just one quick point of potential interest, that the, any financing for the regionally beneficial refugee road project would still require additional action being taken by the board trustees. So nothing is written in stone at this point in time. Hopefully, things change for the better going forward, and that news can be considered whenever those potential items come before your, for you for a vote.
Well, what I'm saying is we can't wait for, Petazola can't be left up in the air, the TID can't be left up in the air. This is a discussion we should have now, we can't just, we, we have to take the lead in determining, are we moving forward, or are we making a change with this right now? Because that's 3.5 billion we're going to have to get ourselves to.
But you have yet to, that was my point.
Right, but everybody's, Mr. Lozier can attest to it, that's what they're planning on. So are we still, again, going to follow through on that? And why aren't we? It seems like Mr. Vance doesn't want to discuss it, but I would hope the board would want to discuss this, because it is important, and again, we can't just leave them to assume that we will and then back out to the last minute, because there's construction timelines, there's engineering timelines, there's all this stuff. So it seems like some want to just keep pushing things out in the future, we'll deal with it, but these are items that we have to deal with now.
Though they are moving forward, Madam President, and when the TID's engineer brings things for your consideration, these are all valid points to ask or point out. But you cannot, if something is, continues to be, if something continues to be in motion, it's in motion until it's stopped, and, and this project is not stopped, it's still in motion, and when it's appropriate to consider financing possibilities or recommendations from TID or whoever, you know, those considerations are going to take place. So I don't know what the rush is to discuss things that could change tomorrow, I guess is my point.
What do you mean change tomorrow? Because what I'm asking, do we, does this board want to move forward with that 3.5 million dollar obligation, looking at other sources of, of revenue? And we're, we're taking on a lot, especially when you put that into this Pike Street project that you're going to propose as we move forward, I'm sure, that's a lot of asks without having that funding coming in. And we're going to have a lot more maintenance on these roads, all those industrial, in our industrial park, those roads are public, so we're going to be responsible for maintaining those, and that's higher wear and tear. It's, we got to be mindful of the budget, and I've had discussions with the fiscal officer on this briefly, and we, we need to make sure we're not overextending ourselves, and to say, we'll, we'll deal with that, the funding later, is a huge mistake. We, we need to be looking at options now, I've reached out to the commissioner, Mr. Flowers, on options, can the county provide more, more funding, maybe take a haircut on the JEDs to whatever. I'd be proactive, but it takes the board, and to just push this till later is, I think you're responsible.
Are you asking for something like?
I'm seeing what your thoughts are. I'm asking for a discussion. Why can't we have a discussion? Do you think we should, you voted no on the refugee road project.
Yeah, it should, it should be paid for. You have to see that.
And that is why I just brought up that the way we were paying for it is gone. So now it has to either change, or we don't do it. So that's what I'm bringing to the board, but you guys don't want to seem to discuss it, and that's concerning. We can't just wait till it gets into later phases, we're, we're, we need to get the IGA two and three if we're moving forward. We've had the discussion with the finance people, with the state, with the CIV, or the loans, and things are moving at a quick pace. They're doing right-of-way acquisition, they're just everything, so this should be a great concern to this board, and I'm not seeing it.
Do you have a recommendation? Are you, are you asking to close the project tonight? Is that what you're pushing?
No, what I'm looking for is the thoughts of the board, because this board, we're all supposed to be, and to have, I, we went over that, where some don't agree with that, but to have a discussion and, and not have things, decisions made outside the meeting between just one trustee and consultant and that, I'm trying to have a discussion in public.
So what is a specific point you want to discuss?
Should we be moving forward, and what are people's thoughts on alternate funding for the 3.5 million? Because we would have to pay that in full if nobody else moves in there. Petazola's going up on their side, what if everybody's going over there? That's the discussion, and if you guys don't have any thoughts on it, I guess that's what it is, but I'm concerned. 3.5 million is quite a bit.
And it, once again, the, the final approval associated with the 3.5 million has not been given by the township board of trustees to date. I mean, that is a decision you would have to make at some point in the future, provided, you know, the regional benefit of this, this project, which I think is, is well-known, continues to be financially affordable.
But that's, I, I'm talking to a board member that voted against it, and one that voted for it, and we cannot, Petazola's our partner in this, the county, the TID is a partner in this. What you're saying is, just let it go along, and if we change your mind at the very end, well, we got to sign those loan documents, change your mind then. I'm saying do the responsible thing for us and our partners in saying, this is what we're concerned about, we will maybe make these changes, or we're out. We're in 100%, make, make that decision, or be ready to make that decision quickly, for our sake and our partners' sake. I don't want to do that to Petazola.
Madam President, I think we have one thing in common, so we can move on to the presentation. My understanding is trustee Evans doesn't have any kind of specific ask tonight, he wants us to keep these concerns, you know, at, at the immediate forefront, and I don't have any recommendation to stop what's been done, and I understand that at some point in time, you're going to have to make a decision on the financing associated with the 3.5 million associated with the project going forward, and I predict we're going to be, you know, in conversation with Mr. Lozier in the next couple days to, to pin down what if any responsibilities the township should be considering at this point in time to expand upon or to withdraw from. And I'll have a report at your next meeting if you so desire.
I don't know if it's appropriate to comment on the refugee road project.
Sure, please.
So, the only thing I could say about this, certainly time is of the essence. I mean, I sent a bunch of emails out today, as trustee Evans said, we talked to the consultant, the bond consultant from the CIV, got the groundwork laid, laid out for this. But my understanding was that the original financing model, Ashley Furniture could cover the debt, and everything else is going to be gravy that would be a product of the road. This was all kind of new to me about the lack of capacity, the southwest Licking Water and sewer has, and their sewer line, maybe, and this something that sort of commissioner Flowers, and sort of developer, that I don't know how that's going to get resolved, maybe you have a better plan than I do. But it was my understanding that, we were talking about Ashley Furniture was creating enough revenue to cover this debt, and that's why the trustees signed an MOU with Petazola, agreed to move forward with the project, because if we did back up now and stop, it's not like turning off a light switch, there's a whole lot of consequences to that. Well, my, grants received, this is, this is serious, and I agree, maybe the board needs more information, and I didn't come prepared to talk about it tonight. But it, time is of the essence, there's some question.
My, my thing is, either the board should give green light to it and proceed knowing this information, or not. It, it's a little concerning that the board's not, yes, let's go forward, and, I mean, if it's a benefit, and we can pay for it, and eventually some will get in there, but there's, there's no discussion. As far as capacity, they have capacity, 300,000 gallons per day, but it's getting it secured for that development, they can't do it until they have the development plan with the county, and so I think that, that's the issue in this one. But as far as I was aware, I, I believe that, and correct me if I'm wrong, that the T, the revenue from the new warehouses were paying for this, not Ashley.
I mean, development wasn't even around when we first started talking about it. This is, we've only seen a sketch plan last week, maybe even more...
TPA has been discussed, that's why we're talking about the, the whole, because Ashley's already there, we didn't need them to attract it, we didn't need them to, to, my thought was, TPA, Jeb Beres says, we needed this to move forward in, with this, and our, our warehouses will, well, you know, that fund us.
But before, before you were elected to this term, it was Ashley Furniture, and the reason that I say that in its significance is because there were traffic impacts brought on by Ashley Furniture that were being mitigated by this project.
Right.
And so, not to, but we have come up with a Licking County plan to do some of those improvements, and it was all wrapped up in the three lane and the roundabouts.
And it, it still may make sense to move forward. What I'm saying is, as a board member, I have an obligation to bring it to the board, and for not, there not to be discussion or any indication yet, we can't do what Mr. Vance is suggesting of, wait till we sign the loan and make, make the decision then, it's too...
I agree, the time is of the essence, but I can also see that the board probably wants some solid information.
Right, but not at the loan signing, when, when we get to the approval of it, because it's not fair to others in...
I'm ready to go, I'm ready to go phase two, that's right-of-way acquisition. And we really can't, of course, that would be very problematic if we acquired right-of-way and didn't build a highway project. You can't do that.
And that, that's what I'm saying, if you guys need more information, do it, have a special meeting, whatever, but it, it's very confusing why no one just wants to discuss it, or it thinks it's a big deal, and we're losing that development.
Well, Madam, Madam President, I can provide clarification, it, it's hard to discuss something that you don't have the information upon which to form an opinion to discuss. So I think we definitely, we definitely need some more information, this is an issue that needs to go forward, needs to be decided, once the information and the options are put forth for review.
We have the options.
Okay, well, this is going to be on the next agenda as well, because Bill Lozier has indicated it is a pressing item that needs direction.
Right, but time is of the essence, and again, I go back, if you would communicate, what you should, you would have this information, more so. Work with me, all right? Step up.
Madam President, we'll put it on the next agenda.
What's the deadline?
Thank you. I've got part two of the IGA, where is our attorney's position? I would like to have that in the hands of the pastor.
Can you get to the line so that he can get all record filmed, please?
I mean, weeks.
I, I, we're having a part two of the intergovernmental agreement, which is really a modification of part one, and it's for right-of-way acquisition.
It's simpler than the original.
It's just that, it basically says we're authorizing part two, because all of the details of part one, two, and three are in the original master agreement.
But that's what we could allocate financially.
Yes, sir. And I would say our attorney's going to probably, knowing him because he bills every hour, he'll probably have that to me pretty quick, you know, within the next week. And I would, I'm, I intended to give it to this board and to the Petazola City Council at that time. This thing about, you know, southwest Licking, and this other development on the southwest corner, Ben and Parkway, and Refugee Road, they have a set sketch plan submitted just last week to Licking County Planning, so I don't mind talking about it, it's a public record. But I know that Jeb Beres came here and showed financial models using that development as an example, but it was not the original development that produced enough revenue.
But when I came on, there was talk about what was going in, where the TPA is going now, of the 3.5 million that Mr. Carlisle said he was going to get, nobody knew who it was, nobody, he was going to extract that 3.5 from them, so it wasn't based on the Ashley.
Yeah.
It was based on this phantom company that Mr. Carlisle was going to extract that 3.5 from.
Yeah, there's a lot of things said like that, whether or not that could have been a reality.
But that's what I said, our decision, and it was always proposed that this TPA, that revenue was going to pay for, pay for this, this loan, and that's why it's a change, it's a big change, and we need to make a decision, green light or red light, of are we going forward, or do we want to pull back and let our partners know, because it's critical?
And again, this is why Petazola wanted an MOU, I mean, we were anticipating that anybody would pull out of this agreement. I mean, again, I've got a grant secured from the state for right-of-way, if we have to give that back, that's really bad.
And I'm not saying we should...
It may, it may be a long time before we get another grant.
Yeah.
And it would be, well, 280,000 to 300,000 every six months, right, for 20 years?
No, no, per year.
It's every...
Every year.
Oh, every year.
So the max, and again, I was using simple mortgage calculators, trustee Evans said, so the range of payments, based on what the bond consultant said, would be between 400 and 600,000 a year, right-of-way, too. So that would be 200 to 300,000 dollars a year for Edna Township. And that's why I say that he, the same model that he showed you for this new development that never was a development, he had something very similar for Ashley Furniture, illustrating that Ashley Furniture pays, this guy generates this kind of revenue, and then everything beyond that would be gravy. Now, you know, the things that were said in the past about leveraging 3.5 million dollars of, one of the, come on now.
Right.
You know, that was never going to be reality. But again, it was, it was my, the way that I remember this, is first models that we saw was Ashley Furniture paying for this. And again... And again, unwinding this is, unwinding this is going to be a challenge because there are, the developers that are up there, Red Rock and the View, they need certain road improvements. And there will be a project, the question is what will the project look like? You know, I know that one of the developers is going to have an improvement to Mig and Refugee Road regardless. So the backup plan is all the money that the developers were contributing is back into a different project. And this would become an intersection project with a left turn line and back to the idea of cobbling up that road that has drainage problems and pavement problems and all that sort of thing. It ultimately is the decision of the board. It's just, this would be a lot of unwinding in this. I know these things happen, I get it, especially with water and sewer issues these days. We've seen the same thing happen in other parts of the county, water and sewer capacity are an issue. Those are supposed to be enterprise agents, meaning they run like a business, meaning they pay, they pay for their infrastructure with tapping fees and water bills and if they're not able to pay for it, then, you know, they need a different financial model.
Correct.
But I guess that's none of my business except when it starts affecting our highway projects.
Well, like I said, I just wanna bring the board's attention. I was hoping that we could get a direction, especially like I said, with one trustee voted no on the project, I thought it would be very sensitive for him. I don't know where Ms. Key stands on it with this, with this knowledge of how important it is. And I'm not saying we shouldn't or should, I'm leaning more towards we should, but we've gotta come up with an idea of funding. We just wanna wait and try to get somebody else in there and deal with it that way and maybe we could get somebody else that isn't a warehouse, it's a different kind of business. It might be an opportunity. So we're just not adding another warehouse. But it's, again, just concerning that you wanna push it up, you know, the consultant wants to push it off and Mr. Key, I haven't heard you say yes or no, you're concerned or not concerned. Where do you stand on this? I ask Mr. Key a question.
Well, we discussed this before and I guess I was, yes, before that project. I know there were some changes where a major developer pulled out. I'm not sure how that's gonna affect us. Do you have any answers to that, Mr. Lozier?
Again, trustee McKee, this project that we're talking about was not part of the original financial models.
Okay.
I know that it started to become something that everybody was leaning on. I mean, trustee Evans and I had talked to this developer, it was the same one as TPA, about making a financial contribution to the project equal to what it would cost to build a left turn lane. I don't know that we hadn't completely obligated that, this becomes a negotiation process.
But for the incentives given, that's your negotiation though? You're not gonna get that payment?
And these are things that I'm not aware of, these development compensation agreements and so forth that this board has to structure and I know that there's given take on this. I understand that and, you know, tax payments and all that sort of thing come, they don't come without cost. And that is really something that the board has to decide, but ultimately it is your decision. My problems are not necessarily your problems, but I'm just saying, there's a lot of unwinding in this because we're halfway through it. And again, I don't know about the MOU that was signed with the task of saying that the project was gonna move forward. I don't know how binding that is and I don't really know, I didn't read it closely, I don't know.
I was told it's not legally binding, but regardless of it, Mr. Key, I mean, do you have?
I have no questions, I didn't have no questions.
Do you have an opinion on it?
I have no more questions right now, Mr. Evans.
I wasn't asking for a question, but do you have an opinion on it?
Like I said, I am, I don't wanna, as of now.
You don't wanna discuss it?
I, like I said, I don't feel the need to discuss it right now. I voted to support it. As you know, he kept saying it, Mr. Johnson didn't, but yeah, I was the one that supported it, so.
Any information or any questions that the board needs, please feel free to reach out and I'll supply that. I will not be able to do that next week.
Okay.
I will not, I'm gonna be out of town, I'm gonna turn it over.
Okay.
I'll continue to work at finding some alternative resources and ways through the county or whatever it is.
Okay, thank you. Okay, move on to the new business. You wanna do the presentation first?
Sure, so new business is, old business is Pike Street.
Yep. Well, the new business is kinda like the resolution right here.
Oh, the new business is the Morpsey.
Application.
Pike Street. So, this is the road that we're proposing to construct. We went over this at the last board meeting. We have handouts that I think is in everybody's hands tonight. The new road would have two 11-foot lanes, two 8-foot parking lanes. On the south side of the road, a 7-foot sidewalk. On the north side of the road would be a 10-foot pathway, which is for bicycles and pedestrians. It is a federal requirement to accommodate bicycles. Since we are going for federal funds through Morpsey, we started showing this on our plans. The right away is 80 feet wide and all of this can fit inside the existing right away. As I always say on these projects, the road maintaining authority is not occupied all of the right away that was available to them for the last 180 years since National Road was constructed with federal funds back in the 1830s. But that right away is publicly owned and it's available for widening the project. Project would, we started out with two phases, but to talk about the project in its entirety would run from one end of the road to the other, more or less. On the east end, it would go down to the stream crossing and at that point it would be coordinated with the Sabatino development, which would connect to it and create a new intersection of US Route 40. On the west end, it would go clear out to the 40 bypass, as we call it, which was a bypass in the 1950s. So the road would be, the entire project with the engineer's construction cost estimate is $8.1 million and that includes construction engineering, which is 10% of that. That also includes a 25% contingency. It also includes the fact that construction inflation for highways has been at 100% for the last two years, at least for certain key items like asphalt. I still think it's on the high side, but regardless of that, it's our story, we're sticking with it for now. If we applied for federal funds, we could get up to 80%, which would be whatever, $6.5 million, I guess, is what we would apply for in federal funds. It's been suggested to also go for an POC application in the amount of about $500,000, so that would be about a million dollars to be paid for by the township. If the costs are higher, like I think they are, if it got extremely low and let's say they got down to $5 million for the whole project, and Nick doesn't like hearing you say that because he did the engineer's estimate, but if it was as low as $5 million, if you work all these numbers backwards with the funding formula, township share would be about half a million. So let's say the township share would be somewhere between a half a million and a million You could also phase this. And again, that was the original intention, was to phase the project, doing the east, east side first, construct it first. I think you may have mentioned the fact that the pavement conditions are far worse on the east side of the road. And in fact, ODOT, if you remember trustee McKee, ODOT volunteered to do a pavement condition rating for us and they did do that. The pavement condition rating is a 44 on the east side, that's out of 100. So they take structural deficiencies and they start subtracting it out of 100, so 56% of that pavement life has been reduced essentially. On the other side of the road, I don't even remember what it was, I think it was 88.
88.
Well, we just capped that.
Was it before it was capped or?
No, they chose to cap this. Cause ODOT gets involved because of federal funds, so we're, we're circling them and.
It was 88 on that side.
Yeah, is that what it was?
Yeah.
That is part of this boring, but the biggest thing we have going for us on this project is the pathways, the connectivity, the local community, the complete streets. This is all the new federal requirements that is due a lot of points. It's something that the Federal Highway Administration is encouraging right now.
Nate, you mentioned the interconnectivity, the last time you were speaking, you weren't sure if it connects to the Sabatino development, it's not connecting up to the park, it's not, do we, do we have a rendering of showing where all these paths are, that there's continuous sidewalk, you were saying they could maybe use a bicycle on South Street. Has there been a study or a plan to show, yes, this is a viable path instead of just two endpoints on the plate?
I mean, the project's not, we're just in the preliminary stages of design, but what I recommend first of all is the pathway ends at South Street and that's because we only got up here, is that the old post office?
It's across the road, on the other side.
That's the old township office.
There was a, there was a structure here that we didn't want to disturb.
Oh, that's our hall.
There's an old township, okay.
And so, it ended at South Street in front of the school administration building. So what I would suggest is from that point to you share us on South Street and this little connector route to get onto this pathway. I tried to look at the subdivision plans, there's just not much detail.
No more detail.
So I would recommend that you make a requirement that they connect to your, end of your.
Can't wait, sorry, the final development plans are already approved.
If there are, I haven't seen them, did you guys see them? I haven't seen them. I've seen, all I saw is.
I pointed them through.
Are you going to? I have this print right here and it shows what you're talking about when the creek goes, there's a bridge, right?
Or a culvert, like we would call it.
Culvert. Okay, there's a culvert right there. How far east are you going past that or are you going to that? Cause like originally we were going. Originally we were going to, but we're very early. Whoever comes last should connect to the path, to each other's path, is what I'm saying. If that thing is done, which I haven't seen final construction plans if they exist, I saw some pretty high level renderings, not much different than this. I saw one page, I haven't seen construction. Do you wanna see this?
I'll bring this over to you.
Sure. But the point is.
But in Sabatino, Pike Street doesn't go all the way up to 40, Pike Street would go down into Sabatino's, there's a roundabout and then it comes up. Are there sidewalks and all that? Are there, that's what I think we should know before we go for funding.
Wait a second. Say, right here is where Sabatino says he was going to this point. That's what you guys are talking about almost here, so that leads to section. We can close again.
Okay.
I mean, we can, it looks like the right away is consistent. Nate, can you come over here and say? So we know the project's ending there.
Yeah. Can you put something on the screen?
Yeah, we can. We can extend the project. We can, okay, let's go ahead and bring it up. Again, this is preliminary plan.
Right, are there any construction plans?
Okay, it's a, that was the intention Sabatino gave for that point. He's gonna do, he's gonna turn here and go this way, so he was coming to here, tied in whatever we have here. Trustee Evans, trustee Johnson, we can extend our project or you can tell the developer to extend this project, that is my advice. If he, I haven't seen construction plans.
No, these are not construction plans.
No, this is just a plan.
Yeah, it's a plan.
Preliminary plan.
Right.
Yeah.
Do we know sidewalks are gonna be all the way out to 40 on Sabatino's plan?
No, I don't know anything about that.
That's what I'm saying, I think we should, we've gotta look at things globally, not just piecemeal, so kind of is cohesive for the design and just development of our township. And I think we're looking at piecemeal stuff thinking other people do it or how is it integrated? I still have a lot of questions of, the original plan wasn't a 10-foot line, white path with 7-foot, it was just too rough for sidewalks. And now we're really approaching on the residences, even though we have the right to do it, should we? And this is a lot of development for what's the plan for this area? Is this gonna become businesses eventually or are they gonna be bought out? I think that's the discussion this board's gotta have before we start moving forward on this. And I still have the question, I asked at last regular meeting, who, who requested and who authorized for Pike Street to be placed on the federal aid system? Ms. McKee was silenced.
Well, let me just.
No, please, let me finish. Was silenced and I had to do a records request as a resident to try to get this information and it still wasn't responding to, but I did get an email from Morpsey and I've got a here of Ms. McKee requesting to have it placed on, on the federal aid system, which I think that should be a board decision, not just the whim of one trustee.
It wasn't, Madam President, if I can.
Yes.
It was previously on that list and it was taken off, not by the township, it was taken off by others. So the president of the Township Board of Trustees got it back on with Mr. Lozier's help, with Morpsey's help and we, we understand what your position is.
Just because it was on doesn't mean somebody has the authority to do it.
Mark, it's not about authority, okay?
It is all about authority.
No, it's not, no, it's not. I can live on Pike Street and request that the Pike Street be put on the registry. You don't have to have authority, just like if you have an historical home and you want that, you could do the same thing. Any resident on this road or in the township can request Pike Street be come back on that. That's, that's, has nothing to do with board authority at all.
Can you forward that to me?
Just so you know, it's not about forwarding anything to you, Mark, it's about research. Go out there, read it, go make the calls.
That's what I'm saying for Biden.
It makes no difference, it makes no difference. Why is there?
You're claiming.
First of all, there was a, back on July 14th, 2020, fiscal year 2227, Morpsey attributed transportation funding. I wasn't even on the board, so just so you know. And this thing started way before I was here.
The engineer responded and said that it was a rural road in '09 and so it hasn't been a federal aid route since at least then. It's likely that it hasn't been a federal aid route since 1954.
What is your point, Mark? What is your point, trustee Evans?
My, my point is these should be board decisions, these aren't just one.
I think that you're out of line because I have just as much right to apply for that as she did, she's the one who did it.
There, and, and, Madam President, at this point on the agenda, Bill Lozier is seeking direction to submit a preliminary, and I stress, a preliminary application with Morpsey. If Morpsey likes the project, if, if Morpsey thinks it fits, they're gonna come back with a recommendation for us to submit a final application. So there's a lot of opportunities for public hearings, there's a lot of opportunities for investigations of specifics associated with complementary ideas. So I would suggest tonight, just this, this board trustees decide whether or not you wanna submit a preliminary application or not, would be my recommendation.
Why don't we hold an open house on this, a word session for him.
The map that I showed you, Phil. Lozier. That I showed you, right? I'm like, Jeff, you never talk. I know. Basically it comes to where the edge of that tree line is where the haul port is on the road. That was the intention, so Mr. Sabatino. Point out there, we're adopting. It comes, basically, you're stopping here with the group project you're presenting, but it's looped on Mr. Lozier. Sabatino's, I think it is, was gonna stop here. So now we've got this gap that I wanna make sure is accounted for in some way.
I mean, absolutely, we won't leave that gap, but I would recommend that you try to work with the developer, I don't see him in here tonight.
He, and this is, he's one of the greatest, said this is my intention. He caused me, because this is his property.
That's what I had for the meeting, last time, indicated a willingness to connect this project.
Right.
I mean, whether or not, I see Licking County Planning, make developers do a lot of stuff.
Okay.
I mean, you can either make it part of the public project or you can work with the developer to connect it. the developer to connect it. What Mark was asking is getting it across 40 to the park. We have the plans for that.
That would just be, yeah, that, I mean, you got, that's a big ask, and that's.
That's, I mean. It only goes that far, is what I'm saying. His property only goes that far. That's where his property stops, is where I should be.
Yeah, but if we have public right of way.
Well, he's talking about the park across the road about 40.
Oh, well, there's two things, yeah.
What I'm talking about is interconnectivity. If you have a bike path from a 1.3-mile, to me, it doesn't seem like anybody's thinking about that, the interconnectivity, or how, or even, we don't know if there's sidewalks at Sabatino's going to 40. Why don't we know that? Before we start making decisions.
Right now, this is a preliminary.
Yeah, there's only.
We're just applying for federal fundings.
Right. We've already spent money.
Exactly, and that's why we don't wanna lose the money that we spent from the township prior to me becoming a trustee in you. So why not, why wouldn't we wanna scrap the money? Just, that's why.
We wouldn't, that was towards engineering, that wouldn't be scrapped. It would go back to the original.
Again, this is preliminary.
So let's have an open house and get input from the community.
But Mark, I'm sorry, the, the screening application is.
It's a deadline.
Yeah.
There's a deadline.
And what, and what Morpsey told us was, because I asked him, should we get a better chance of getting, you know, phase one funded, because it's a lot less, or should we go for the whole thing? What he said was, go for the whole thing, and we'll advise you. Because they're working in partnership with us right now. So, you know, whether or not Nick and I disagree with the cost of this project is not relevant right now, because there's a lot of time to figure this out. The final application's not due until September. I was really encouraged when we talked to Morpsey about getting this grant. You know, the TID is here to assist in moving these projects forward, and I should know the opinion.
And that you give permission from the TID to move forward on this? I mean, your support, I should say.
I mean, we're in our government agreement, we got funds from the township to move this up there.
My, well, my concern is that we fully vet this, and it, we can cap it for $84,000 versus.
I understand.
This, and again, what's the, I think this should be in concert with a comprehensive plan of what's Pike Street gonna be. This is a lot, if we're just putting, leaving it as residences, and we're going right to them, that they're not gonna like. So what's that supporting? And it's not a true connect through Pike, because you gotta go through that Sabatino roundabout. I, I think we need to think about this and discuss it more.
There's, there's time, and in fact, we have to do what you're saying. It's a federal requirement.
Yes.
Public involvement meetings are a federal requirement, but one is not there yet.
You just wrote.
But they only have a two-year funding cycle, Morpsey.
So if we apply for this, we're not obligated to take it, we're not, it doesn't restrict us for anything else?
It's preliminary.
It's, it's, it's called a screening application, and that's why a lot of my answers on the application that I sent to Rosalind, I'll let you send all three to you. I've got a hard copy here, but I, all you do is hit the send button. But there's a lot of things that are reserved for the final application, and I filled out a lot of it, because we do have a lot of information, because Nick is about 40% done. We call it our 30% migraine typical section, which is old terminology that he, is not familiar with. Stage one plans are 60%. We're not to that point yet, because we have to make decisions and get a public involvement before we go there.
Yep.
We need to do these things. They like, the federal process has gone to open house style, meetings, public involvement meetings.
And when would that be?
We're ready.
In time.
We're ready for that. We can start going to that. This project is more straightforward, because we're not anticipating any right wing takes, and we're not anticipating any environmental impacts. In fact, the, oh, District 5 can approve the environmental document, programmatically they call it. It's, they actually do it for us at their office. The biggest thing is, is we're not taking the right away, we don't have stream impacts or wetlands impacts, we're not taking down any historic buildings. We should be in pretty good shape with the environmental document. But I agree with you. I mean, this is kind of the start of the public involvement process. We haven't asked for public input on it, which a true public involvement meeting does.
Well, in my opinion, it should have been done before, before the board voted for all funds and for, but, I mean, I, I think we should do it now, definitely, and have a workshop on it to get input from people, put it on the agenda, and get, like I said, I received that email today.
We have no problem with that.
Have better diagrams, figure out, maybe Mr. Vance can figure out, work with the developer and the agencies, Winton County, of a path, and.
We have no problem with that. Right now, this is preliminary, this is the application.
So will that be on the next agenda?
I'm not saying that, Mr. Evans. I'm not saying that. But right now, we need to move forward with the application. That's one step at a time.
The application.
Because we not, may not get approved. That's the whole thing.
Well, that, it's very competitive. I mean, they have about four or five times the ask of what's available. There is no guarantee, and then we have to wait another four years. You know, this, we didn't really talk about federal funds until this board of trustees was. Well, that's not true, because Carlisle.
You couldn't get it on, it wasn't.
We tried, it was on the federal aid system. But in order to submit this document, I've gotta have an authorized signature.
Yes, and I'm willing to, I have a resolution that we got from the prosecutor's office.
Can we change that to three?
Yes.
That's good. If I could get that, if the board decides to do this, I will need that. As I said, I'm leaving this weekend. I would like to hit the send button on this, but I need to have that document so the board supports. Doing the screening application, Mark, this, you still have a lot of.
As long as it doesn't oblige us, and that's fine. But again, this board, we need to be transparent, we need to get input from the community sooner rather than later.
Absolutely, we should.
Well, we'll see when it gets on the agenda.
It'll, you can't submit a final application with that board trustee direction to do so, and there's gonna be a lot of public hearings and work sessions, I would say plural, prior to get that point. Morpsey might not even be interested in this project. So I mean, there's no sense spending weeks on something that might not, might never come to fruition.
Right.
So let's put the preliminary in, see what they say. If they're interested, then let's get started with the public process to vet the project.
Like, should we? Maybe Mr. Johnson knows the history of it. What's the plan for Pike Street? What, what was the need for all the improvement, and was it supposed to go commercial? Was it supposed to? That's a lot of investment for that little corridor, do you recall?
Yeah, it was part of the overall plan for beautification of this area. It would go along with the High Point development, go along with the park that we were gonna have. It was, it was supposed to, you know, to make that go into the township, nice and then to work that way also.
Kind of be like our downtown to end of this town.
Right.
We're out, it's kind of gives a heart that we don't have.
My concern is we've expanded, now I'm saying just the regular sidewalks, to really approaching on the people's side. So I think we should reevaluate.
More than the right of way, isn't it?
And, right, but that, that's right out to the houses, and if you're, if.
As a point of clarification, we were proposing two 7-foot sidewalks.
Yep.
And we expanded to 10, but we reduced the travel lanes by one foot each, which we probably should have been doing from the get-go, you know? We went to two 11-foot lanes and still two 12-foot lanes. It's all that's required for a road, this classification. And current design standards say that serves as traffic calming, which is the complete street concept. That's why the Federal Highway Administration likes these kinds of projects, because they're more pedestrian-friendly. And traffic calming is a big part of that, and there's all kinds of different measures. You hourglass the intersections, you put lighting, again, we're gonna put decorative walkways, whether that be stamped concrete or something like that. The lighting would be at the intersections, and I know that there's concern about light pollution and all that, and certainly that needs to be addressed. Urbantis has hired a lighting consultant that has expertise in this, can address that at a public meeting.
I said, that's what, I, I think, because I, before getting on this board, I think I attended every trustee meeting for like two years or so, except two on Saturdays. And it, this was never discussed in detail, from my recollection, of what they're doing or why, or it was kind of just presented and voted on. And I think community input, especially if you're saying we're doing it to make it look nice, well, if everybody that lives there is against it or has concerns, I think we should listen. And we're in the middle of our comprehensive plan review, is there any coordination with Mr. Leonard on this?
We have one meeting so far.
So, but you can meet outside, what I'm saying is, you can coordinate with Mr. Leonard, and I, the commissioners also are members of Morpsey now, and we have the opportunity to use their planners, which they would help Mr. Leonard also. Have you discussed that with the Morpsey, using their planners as an aid for Mr. Leonard?
No.
Maybe something we should think about. But I think this should be included in any discussion with Mr. Leonard.
Cool.
That's my thoughts. More community input, and let's make a reasoned decision. I mean, this might be the best thing in the world to do, but it might not. It might, it might need other changes. Let's talk about it, have a discussion. That's all I have to say.
Okay, any other questions?
Any other questions, Jeff?
No.
She has some questions. You live on Pike Street.
Oh, yeah. Sure. I'm sorry, I was.
Have a comment.
You come up to Mike, so he'll be able to read it for me.
I'm not sure what the question was. Can you give the question?
No, 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 so do you have any comments?
Which was, do you have any questions?
I have a lot of comments.
What's your name and address, please?
My address is 811 Pike Street Southwest.
Okay.
And I'm state home mom, so I see the ins and outs of the community that come through the street for the day, for the evening. I have five children of my own, my neighbors, and they're expanding, and there, some of them are young families expanding, and some of the families there are older families that I see. My street is not safe for people to walk on. I was just explaining that the kids in the neighborhood can't come to each other's houses just because the street is not safe enough for them to walk on. I have seen what development does to communities over time if you don't take care, if we don't do this project, that is going to disappear. I'm in this community because I love the, the historicalness of it, the small-town part of it, you know, we have our own problems, we have our own issues. But my house is actually Dr. Watkins' house, and I would take so much part in that. You know, the, the house across the street from me was the lawyer's house, and I remember hearing that he would take, he had the first automobile at that time, and he would take it down the road to Columbus, and it's like the house behind me, that was Dr. Watkins' house. And so, and like the times that I'm doing things in my own home, I'm like fighting doorways, I'm like, there was a doorway here once, like, this is so cool and so exciting. We're like, trying to, we were like, where are we gonna put a fire pit? Well, we couldn't put it here, we couldn't put it there, we couldn't put it here because of how many different changes have taken place over time, just in my own backyard. And I would love, love to see this happen in Pike Street, and I know that it's gonna impose on our front lawn, but the way it is right now, they're not usable anyways. And even though this might actually encroach on some of the front, it makes the area usable. So you're saying, well, let's not take five feet away, but if 10, 15 feet of it's not usable, do you understand what I'm saying?
What, what I'm, I'm not saying this is all or nothing. What I'm saying is, what should be developed there? It should be approved, but to what level? To what?
Today?
Because it started out as.
Does it begin today? I agree, we need to talk about this on the community. But when we're talking about getting it approved, we need the preliminary approval of this, you know, we can just appear to just apply.
That's for the federal funds, but if we, if we reduce it, if we don't have the 10-foot sidewalks and the 7-foot sidewalks, which will bring it in a little bit more, maybe make it more of a rural feel than just concrete, may, maybe that cost will be a little bit more for the township.
Well, what is the feel, what is the feel now? The feel now is like, we look like a bunch of Beverly Hillbillies up the Mount Pike Street. We got some really, really nice houses, and we got some.
It's very, it's very rural.
It's very diverse. And so, to beautify that, it may not necessarily look like a rural, rural thing anymore, but we're not exactly rural, that rural anymore. I mean, look at, when I look at my backyard, well, I see McDonald's, and I'm gonna see all these other signs coming, so to say, well, let's preserve this one street, because, you know, it's gonna take away from the ruralness of it, well, it's gonna go all the way if we don't do something about it now.
I'm just saying, we're, we're trading smaller side to 17-foot sidewalks.
And I said, I like it. I like the idea of it. My neighbors like the idea of it.
I'm for liar neighbors that are very concerned. That's what I'm saying, have that discussion.
And I'm glad they're concerned, and I'm glad that you are for, for, for us.
Discussion.
Discussion and being transparent. I really appreciate that. It's just unfortunate, I don't agree on how you're presenting it, and what you're, you're taking, I feel like you're taking away from like, what this could be.
No, I'm just asking questions, because you, you need to ask the questions to make sure you have a good thought.
I know, but I, I agree, but I think the questions that you're taking this towards is, is, is dividing.
I, I totally agree with Mark. It's a beautification project, it's what it started out to, and we're naturally had. And you agree that that's a good thing to do, right?
I agree. I, I mean, I'll go door to door to each of them, he was in Pike Street, and talk to them, and find out what their concerns are, if they can't come to one of these meetings.
But.
And I would rather, the reason I came here was to find out, what are, what is the negative impact of doing this? That's why I came to this meeting, to find out what it is, because I am so for it, I need to know what the negative impact is in order to try to get my neighbors on board, because I'm not gonna quietly go in and say, oh, this is great, amazing, and not know what I'm talking about.
Right, but we didn't have 17-foot sidewalks until we decided to go for federal funds, so those 17-foot sidewalks weren't as a result of good planning or need or anything, it was, hey, we can get federal funds.
And I see that some.
And so that's my concern.
And, and that would be a concern as well, too, for me too, and for my neighbors. But as it stands now, if we don't do that, it's, 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 it's going to continue to crumble.
If we don't do this plan, we can go to the original plan, or some modification of, is what I'm saying. And it should be a community input, especially people living here like you. You should be able to come here, make your point, we decide as a board, and then move forward.
Yes.
That hasn't happened.
And I believe, and if, correct me if I'm wrong, that hasn't happened yet, because it needs to get to a place where.
The township already approved money, money's been spent on it, the fire board did do that. What I'm saying is.
Is there anything that we can do to change that now?
We can have a discussion with the community, as people are.
And pull, pull out of funds that we've already put into it.
Nobody's saying pull out of anything.
We've already put funds in, yes?
Of the original design.
We have a, we have a due date.
Modified.
Yes?
We have a due date on this preliminary, this.
For federal funds.
Application, federal funds that we're applying for.
Yes.
Yes, ma'am, with, it's coming any day now, up to, I think.
Thursday.
Yeah.
The day. So I'm fine with applying for federal funds, but we still need to have the discussion of what we're doing, whether we go forward or not, with community input.
I feel confident that we will, I understand.
I'll help you out, all right? I'm going to make a resolution, number 2207.
23, yeah. 23.
03?
2207, oh, 503.
Resolution authorized the president of the board trustees, Roslin McKee, to exec, execute, execute the application for Morpsey, attributable transportation funding for Pike Street as presented with the draft copy. Such application attached.